Hello, I'm Hannah with the Lethbridge Transparency Council and I am speaking here with John Middleton Hope, council candidate for the Lethbridge Municipal Elections. So, welcome, John.
Thanks very much, Hannah. I appreciate it.
Thanks. So, we're gonna get started right away here. The first question that I have for you is what do you think needs improvement in the processes of city council and the administration? And how would you make these improvements?
Good. Thanks for the question. Really, I've spent a fair amount of time speaking with business owners and they've informed me that the process to get business done in this city, which includes things like development permits, is really complex and is onerous in many ways. And sometimes it's more complex than those systems or processes that they have in Calgary and Edmonton. So, I think we need to work with businesses and developers to try and streamline this process. And we need to encourage development, not try and put impediments in the way of business owners. This takes leadership on council and at City Hall, and that's what I intend to provide.
Thank you. What recommendations would you make to engage more citizens and the city's municipal development plan and process?
Okay. Well, the MDP has actually been completed and it's actually moving forward. So, that takes a little bit different approach to the question. But this approach, I think, should bring to stakeholders and bring stakeholders together to work on implementing the actions that are contained in the report. If I'm elected, I will encourage reinforcing a mandate that examines and prioritizes our needs versus our wants. Because I think citizens are concerned about the rising taxes. I think that we need a strategic vision for our city that considers where we want to be in 20 or 30 years from now. And I think that's pretty important. And I think the MDP, which is, by the way, 269 pages long and contains way too much historical information, although I do enjoy history. Most people, I think, will never read it. And so, I think it's very important for us to recognize that the strategic areas of the MDP moving forward are areas that as a city council, we need to examine in terms of what are our needs as a community and what are our wants? And go to the citizens of this community to find direction on those initiatives.
Yeah, the MDP is certainly a very, very long document. I know somebody who's read it. It's a full book. So, that's absolutely an assessment there. So, what do you think the top three issues are in the community? And what would you do to address these issues?
Good. Well, the top three issues are those of my platform. First is public safety. Second is leadership. And the third is continuous economic development. I think support for the police, EMS, and fire is pretty important. And I think we need to be returning funds that we've taken away from fire and EMS and the police service in the 2022 portion of this four-year budget. The community well-being and safety strategy requires leadership. Now, this is a committee that's been put together to examine our homelessness crisis and the issues that we're experiencing in the downtown core. But I think it needs specific constructive leadership to develop a very comprehensive strategy that will address homelessness, will address the disorder and the crime and addictions that we're experiencing in our city. I think we need to rely more on units like the watch program, the downtown beat unit, and the crime suppression team to combat crime and disorder issues in our downtown core. I think we require competent, experienced people on council with leadership skills and vision that are able to help accomplish economic development and crime reduction. Because I see the two of them going together. Lastly, I think developing an entertainment district downtown to draw people to locations and activities is something that young people, particularly Gen Z like you, are interested in. In speaking with my granddaughter who's at the college and some of the young people on my campaign staff, they've indicated to me that they're concerned about going downtown because of the level of negative activities that are happening. And they believe that there's really nothing to go downtown for. So, I think that I think we need to develop this downtown environment where we attract people to a safer environment than we currently experience. I think we also need, and I'm certainly going to promote the use and the development of town centers in the three areas of the city. I think driving across the city to get a stick of lumber or a bag of screws doesn't make a lot of sense to me from an environmental perspective as well as from an economic perspective. And I think it's high time that we work collaboratively as a city with developers to try and establish these town centers. I think we need to fund and support annexation of lands down to the airport. And I know that's on the horizon for the city. But I think that's an important examination of where we're going in the future. I think if we can develop the airport to its full potential, I think we have a great opportunity here to create this not only an economic hub, but also a travel hub for the region. And I think we need to work with the county on industrial corridor along 43rd Street in particular and work with developers, rather, on a regional economic growth platform that looks at Lethbridge as perhaps the center of this, but not the only area for development.
Thank you for those well-thought-out answers, John. What would you want the city to do to create a good environment for businesses in Lethbridge?
Well, there's three areas in particular: plans, processes, and progress. I think we need to develop a plan for regional hubs and streamline the process for developers and businesses. And I think we need to incentivize development and promote collaborative models to spur growth and services. We have a great opportunity here. All of the other parts of the city that work really well, things like housing, things like our parks, things like our schools, all of those pieces work really well together. And I think we really need, as municipal government and as, I think, working with other groups like Economic Development Lethbridge, the Build Program, I think what we need to be doing is we need to be reaching out to businesses across Canada and in fact into the United States to encourage them to bring businesses here. And once we land them in Lethbridge, that's on our international airport, when I think of landing these businesses in our community, we're bringing not only a business, but we're bringing families to our community that can benefit from our way of life here. And I think it's really important that we work with developers to facilitate growth and development in our community that will, in the long run, benefit not only those businesses, but will benefit citizens and our city as a whole.
Thank you. In the most recent MDP process, what decisions did you agree with and what decisions do you disagree with? Why?
Over 269 pages, I have nothing to disagree with. Of course, I think the MDP, not NDP, is designed to project future growth and development for the city and actually for the region as well. I think it currently ties into several other plans. And I think that they address regional development, which I've mentioned earlier. I think is fundamental to our growth and development in the future. Land use, transportation, infrastructure, and planning is subject to available funding. However, they rarely adequate, in my view, they rarely adequately consider ongoing operating costs. So, it's all very well and good to take funding from the federal government or the provincial government to establish things, as an example, like the bus depot downtown. That was a great idea in its inception. But it's been difficult to bring people into park there. It's been difficult to get people to rent office space in there. Two of the three bus or transportation companies that we anticipated would be a part of that. So, Red Arrow and Greyhound no longer are a part of it. And it wasn't a bad idea to establish this facility to begin with. But the downside is, is we don't have the revenues coming in that we had before in terms of surface parking. And we have an ongoing capital cost to that operation that we have to consider when we're looking at these facilities. I think in theory, these ideas of development and so forth are important. But I think as a community, we have to be prepared for what they refer to as shovel-ready projects. The plan should consider development on the west side as well because we have 50% of the growth of our city and has been for some time is on the west side of the city. In fact, we're bringing in about 2,000 people a year. And that doesn't include new immigrants who are coming to our region. And of that, about 1,000 of those new residents are taking up residency over on the west side of the city. And if you live over here, there are few services and fewer amenities. So, my idea of the town centers, I think, is a solid one that can attract anchor stores out to perhaps the ATV area over in the crossings and can be the catalyst for future development. I think the MDP did acknowledge the need to attract and retain more of the 14,553 post-secondary students to keep them in our region. We get about 8,000 students that come into our city every year. We have about 6,500 students, 6,553 students who grew up here in the city. How many of these students do we actually attract and retain past the four-year degree programs that we have at the college and at the university? Tech Connect, which was established, it's a good start. But unfortunately, we're just not attracting enough students out of that project to try to keep them here. So, I think very few students actually have been employed through that program. But again, it's a start and I think we need to move in that direction. I think there is an insufficient emphasis on airport development and population projections which do not coincide with the CMA designation that the city of Lethbridge has been provided. We actually have 128,500 people in our region, which is actually just the county of Lethbridge. We have another 8,000 full-time students that come into the city. Our population is 135,000 people. It's not 100,000 people. And we're providing services to those people on a regular basis in addition to over 25,000 people that come into the city every day or pass through our city every day. So, this is a much larger city than people anticipate. And our service provision is actually for a much smaller city. So, we need to take that into consideration as we move forward.
Yeah, as a student in Lethbridge, I can certainly understand a lot of the points that you made. So, this ties it really well into this last question in this section, which is how would you prioritize transportation for the future of Lethbridge? In terms of what type of transportation would you prioritize and where would your emphasis be?
Well, again, it's a good question and very much a Gen Z type of question. And so, thanks for that. I think from an environmental perspective, reducing our carbon footprint is essential for the long-term good of our current citizens and our future citizens. I think we need to provide incentives to carpool. I think we need to enhance public transportation. And I think we need to use local services. Example, again, is the development of these town centers so we don't have to travel across the city for 25 minutes. Doesn't sound like a lot, but it's 25 minutes for me to get from Paradise Canyon over to Home Depot, which is actually just up the hill. But at the end of the day, if we had services like this in all of the areas of the city, that's the three areas that currently exist. And if I get on city council, I intend to petition other city council members to establish an east side of the city so that we can actually have the four points of the compass. But I think that's important. You know, our pathway system is second to none. If you use the pathway system either for riding or biking or running, it's an exceptional pathway system. And I think we need to provide incentives for people to be riding their bicycles. I mean, having done this when I was chief of police and actually still doing this regularly, I exercise very aggressively several days a week. And one of the things that I really enjoy doing is walking and cycling. And it's not too insurmountable to travel from Paradise Canyon over to the downtown core by bicycle. It actually is quite interesting. It's a great exercise. The City Link program that the city came up with, it's not doing well. And I think it's not doing well because it's not being received and the way in which I think the city hoped that it would. So, I think we need to start thinking in terms of reducing our trips and reducing the footprint of the vehicles that we're using, whether it's buses or whether it's carpooling to reduce that footprint. But I think that's one of the things that we need to be doing is reducing our trips, not increasing them.
Yeah, I can certainly appreciate, as someone who also lives on the west side, trips is kind of how to get anywhere. But we have a beautiful city and there's definitely lots of ways to get around. So, I appreciate that as well. This brings us...
Also, one of the reasons why I stayed after I retired from policing and we are able to encourage two of our four kids to move here is because it is a beautiful city. I wake up every morning and I look at that sunrise coming across the prairies. And, you know, I thank my lucky stars for where I live.
Yes. No, me too. I love sitting with my coffee in the morning and just being able to see all of the trees. And it's just, it is truly beautiful. So, we're gonna move on to our last section here, which is talking about finances. So, simple question, where do you think the city should spend more money?
Good. So, simple response. Reallocation of funds back to public safety, police, fire, and EMS. The number one concern out of the 1,300 people that my campaign staff and I have gone and met door-to-door is about their public safety. And we're not going to do, we're not going to increase public safety. We're not going to solve the big city problems that we're now faced with by reducing our reliance on public safety initiatives, which include the police, fire, and EMS. When we remove a million dollars, which I'll talk about in just a moment here, but when we remove a million dollars from the police budget and over $600,000 from the fire and EMS budget, when AHS does the kinds of things that it is doing about looking at outsourcing EMS services to a third-party provider, we're moving in the wrong direction. We're not moving in a direction that is going to come up with solutions. We're moving in a direction that is creating problems.
Yeah, I know that outpouring of support that even Halo has received in southeastern Alberta as well when services were cut. So, I can certainly appreciate how that would be very close to people's hearts. Simple next question, where do you think the city should be reducing spending?
Well, the MDP and the CIP are strategic projects and strategic proposals for where city council has seen or would like to project where they hope that we're going to be in the next five to 10 years. Quite candidly, I think they're good models, but I think it's short-sighted. I think we need to be looking at 20 years, 30 years, 40 years out from now. We need to be looking at a city and providing services and projecting where we're going to be when this city hits 200,000. Because it's going to hit 200,000 a lot faster than people imagine. We need to have, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, we need to have shovel-ready projects. When funding becomes available, we're able to put the shovels in the ground and get working on them. And a lot of that has to do with spending money on our infrastructure now that will sustain us in the future.
Well, that's a perfect transition to my last two questions, talking about capital investment. So, the next question I have for you is what criteria do you recommend that the city examine prior to approving capital projects?
Well, I think one of the things that they need to do is they need to examine the funding sources. You know, I mean, the old saying of looking a gift horse in the mouth. But at the end of the day, everything that we receive from the provincial government or the federal government comes with strings. It's not just simply, here's $10 million, do with it as you please. There are always conditions under which the city must operate. And sometimes those conditions are very challenging. So, funding sources are very important. I think we need to examine always going forward the cost of maintenance and renewal of these projects. Because I think before we start jumping at funding, we need to determine what the long-term impacts are going to be on our citizens. Is it going to benefit our citizens? Or are we going to be saddled with a facility that we're going to end up having to pay for generation after generation? So, I think we need to be a lot more strategic in our approach to approving, applying for and approving funding sources going forward. Candidly, I think we're in trouble because I think the funding sources from the federal government after, you know, this election campaign and spending $610 million on an election that provided us with very similar results to what we had before is simply an acknowledgement that there aren't a lot of funds that are out there. I think the provincial government, quite candidly, is broke. I don't think we're going to get the same kind of funding that we've seen over the last 20 years. So, I think as a city, we need to be much more prudent in the projects that we approve and that we use going forward.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't know how many people realize how much funding municipalities rely on from the provincial and federal government just because they don't have the same taxation powers as the provincial and federal government. So, that is...
I think one thing that organizations and pretty much everybody has to understand, there's one taxpayer. We may say that there's various levels of taxation, but there's one taxpayer. There's only one person that's paying those taxes, and that's you and me.
Yes, absolutely. And now, our last question for you. So, looking at the city of Lethbridge Capital Improvement Program that we just talked about, what expenses are you most in favor of and what two would you cancel or not support?
So, what I think I'm most in favor of is capital improvement, which includes such things as railway rehabilitation and development. Now, that probably caught you off-guard. You know, we've committed to spending $9.8 million over the next 10 years. Bridges and span rehabilitation, we're looking at spending $14 million over the next 10 years. If we learn anything from cities like Montreal, Montreal is going through a rehabilitation program of trying to rehabilitate concrete structures across a vast city. And certainly, Montreal's 2.6 million people, we're nowhere near there. But the experiences that they are having to go through is an incredibly costly business of trying to maintain bridges and service structures to a standard where the increase in vehicular traffic can continue. We've seen bridges collapse across North America. And we know that the infrastructure in general across North America is decaying. And so, city council has seen fit in some of their future-looking projects or proposals, rather, to examine how we need to expend resources on those areas. It's not sexy. It doesn't sound like, wow, you know, I'm going to get a new ATV center or we're going to get the Calgary Flames or the Edmonton Oilers moved down to Lethbridge. What we're getting is we're actually getting roadways that we continue to use. So, that's an important piece of the puzzle. I think annexation and development to the airport is the next step for us as a city. We actually haven't done any annexing since 1982. This is an opportunity that is available to us, and I think we need to take full advantage of it. The airport is one of the few facilities/infrastructure projects that has funding that we can move forward with. And I think we need to capitalize on that. This is a great opportunity to return to a time when we had international travel coming out of Lethbridge. Yes, believe it or not, during time errors, time in Lethbridge back in the 90s, we actually had international travel here. We had upwards of 100,000 people using our airport. And only just before COVID did we actually come back to numbers that were similar to that. Now, we've got, quite candidly, we've got a shell of an airport operation. And I think we need to really work hard on developing that and promoting it for the region. I dislike going down to Great Falls and traveling two and a half hours to get to Great Falls to fly to an international destination or two and a half hours up to Calgary. We need it here. And, you know, that's not enough for everybody. Not everybody is interested in going on international travel. But the money that it brings in, the resources it brings in, the people who spend tax or who spend travel dollars here, that economic impact is significant to our community. So, the annexation of the airport is important. The industrial corridor along 43rd Street, which butts the county, is an important distinction. In addition to which, it's also designated as the Canemex Highway. So, if we're looking at 20 years from now, 30 years from now, that highway will be a reality. It's being built in stages from Mexico all the way through the United States and in parts of Canada, this area of Canada. So, at the end of the day, I think we need to be working collaboratively with the county on the development of the industrial corridor along 43rd Street. I think the master plan development for the areas of the corporation as efficiency and growth planning is concerned is absolutely critical. Now, one of the things that I'm least in favor of, and it's because you've asked me what I'm least in favor of, not because I'm going to beat my drum over these issues. But I'm not in favor of another performing arts facility at a projected cost of $138 million. I know that there's no money set aside for it currently. It's a decision that city council previously has recommended that we move towards. And this is at a time when we have spent a significant amount of money on renovating the Yates Theater at a cost of $14.6 million. We're putting $5.6 million into Southern Alberta Art Gallery, and we've built CASA. These are fantastic facilities for our region, and I absolutely, wholeheartedly agree with them. But I think we need to examine how we're going to get to downtown. And when we're downtown, are we safe before we go to these facilities? And so, taking a million dollars away from the police, taking over $600,000 away from fire and EMS, and then asking us to spend $138 million on a new performing arts center, I think has our priorities skewed. The next is, I'm not in favor of the third bridge at a cost, and I live in Paradise Canyon. So, could I use it? Sure. But at a cost of $238 million for a two-lane structure and about $280 million for a four-lane structure, irrespective of what others may say in terms of establishing a toll bridge on this booth and maybe having a couple of trolls underneath, I'm kidding. But at the end of the day, I think this is an enormous expense. And I question whether or not the majority of citizens in this city would approve funding even one of those two projects that I've talked about. Are they nice-to-have projects? Would it be great? Yeah, we've been talking about a third bridge for longer than I've lived in Lethbridge, which is 20 years. The talk about an additional performing arts center, they're great. But at the end of the day, we need to get our house in order. And I think we need to pay attention to the needs of our community and the needs of the majority of our citizens in our community rather than the wants of a smaller majority or a smaller minority. Provincial and federal funding, as I mentioned before, I think are drying up, and they're not increasing. And I think we need to stay focused on sustainable development. So, those projects that I've identified that are what they refer to as shovel-ready projects, I think we need to be focusing on those. And when they become available, we get started on them right away. And I think that's going to be important for the growth and development of our city. I notice in the MDP, for example, there's no discussion about galt gardens and what to do with galt gardens. You know, candidly, this is a disgrace. What we're allowing to occur in galt gardens where we have tents being popped up every night, we have scores of people sleeping in the gardens. And I'd like to take a look at cities like Halifax, for example. Halifax has Victoria Park. And if anybody's ever been to Victoria Park, it's absolutely gorgeous. It has a wrought iron fence around it. It has four entrances and exits to it. It has security personnel in there. People can go in there for a picnic. They can go and spend the day reading by the various fountains and so forth. And there isn't the collateral issues that we have to deal with in our part in Victoria Park. And at night, it's closed. And so, we would have to encourage people who are sleeping in the park and sleeping on the street. And this is a different strategy. We would have to encourage them to find locations elsewhere. And that all ties into my discussion around needing a central locus of services for the homeless and for the drug-addicted that can be identified in one particular area in the city, whatever the area of that city happens to be. But we need to be bringing these services together and focusing on getting people off the street, those people that want to, and keeping our parks and our downtown clean and reducing the crime levels that we are experiencing today. Lastly, I think that there's no transportation alternatives such as smaller, more eco-friendly buses, which is, I don't take the bus. But the City Link program where if I don't have a bus route near my home and I can call the city and get a free ride from the city, I'm not sure that that's something that we want to encourage, quite candidly. And at the end of the day, why aren't we utilizing multipurpose buses or multi-size, whether they're garbage trucks to pick up garbage or whether they're buses to transport people? Why do we have to have one size fits all? Why isn't there an opportunity there to break out of the WestJet model of having only one aircraft? And even WestJet has done that. And I think we need to move forward with examining those needs on a more global perspective and responding more favorably to them.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, John. I appreciate all of those comments. And I know the third bridge, you'll have your answer after this election. That's one of the ballot questions. So, for everybody that's watching, make sure to, when you vote, think about the question before you decide where you want to go. So, before we...
I'm going to invest in hovercrafts before, or hoverboards, like in Back to the Future.
That would be very fun. I would very much enjoy that. So, thank you for your comments, John. Before we wrap up the interview... That would be very fun. I would very much enjoy that. So, thank you for your comments, John. Before we uh wrap up the interview. Is there any last things that you'd like to add or share how people can get in touch with you?
Well, people can get in touch with me through uh um our social media sites. Uh, and I'm on Facebook and Instagram. Uh, we also have uh an email address as well and it's J M H four L A council at gmail dot com. Uh, please go to our 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 sites and have a look at what our campaign stands for. Uh, I produce, or at least my campaign staff produces uh interviews with me. Uh, and they're produced every week along with a series of takeaways from the discussions that I'm having with business owners and. Young people, seniors, or I refer to it because I'm senior. Uh, I refer to it super seniors and what are the challenges and and opportunities they see. Uh, and I really encourage people, uh, if they have questions and I fielded scores of them. Uh, if you have questions of me about me as a person or as a campaign, don't hesitate to contact me. I'll get ahold of you directly. And I really encourage people, either prior to or on the eighteenth of October, get out and vote. Um, the most important vote I think you can make in your lifetime is voting at the municipal level. Uh, municipal council members and city council, uh, as well as. Uh, city administration probably have more impact on your day-to-day lives than the provincial government or the federal government combined. So. Please get out there and vote and I look forward to working for you in the future.
Absolutely. Just to re-echo, please go out there and vote. There's also advanced voting every weekend. So go to. Uh, Lethbridge dot C A to find all of those things. So thank you so much for joining us, John. I look forward to seeing how things play out on October eighteenth.
Thanks, Hannah. I appreciate it.